Can we stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello and good evening, everyone. I do not have a report tonight, so we're gonna go to public participation. Anyone here for public participation? Marie, come on down. You got the new side tonight.
Thank you.
Go right ahead when you're ready. You can raise it up.
On the right, you can raise it on the right.
That's okay, I'll fall. Hi, Marie Blake, 359 Wheeler Road. I have some concerns about the upcoming budget season. Last year, you faced a 1.85 million reduction to your proposed budget. The Board of Finance restored 783,000-plus, leaving you, the board, to deal with approximately 1 million less than what you believed our district needed. So we started this year barely making financial obligations. Many needs, not wants, were put on hold. My other concern is the anticipated increase in enrollment for our schools. I understood that Fon Halla would need extra classrooms as soon as next year. Portable classrooms were mentioned, to the tune of approximately 1 million dollars. Is this still a need? Would this purchase be a part of the budget? And just for the record, I am not in favor of portable classrooms, but that's a discussion for another day. My last question is, where are we with regards to evaluating the current state of Chalk Hill? Can it be renovated and have a third-floor addition? As a district, decisions have to be made. We need to get this ball rolling. As time passes, the expenses of inevitable repairs, maintenance, and renovations will only increase, and state reimbursement will only decrease. My concerns stem from First Selectman Rooney's acceptance speech a few weeks ago. He stated that he needed help from the Board of Ed to get taxes down. He indicated that he needed help from the members on the Board of Ed and help from the superintendent. To me, that means money, money, money. As a district, we are asking our administrators, teachers, and students to do more with less. How low are we as a town willing to go? All of our unmet needs, whether it be staff, programs, supplies, facilities, or whatever, comes at a cost. It's time to read the writing on the wall, to have hard, open discussions with all of our town leaders, and to make some decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. And we do have a, um, Marie, we have a facilities committee meeting here Wednesday.
Okay.
Six or 6:30?
I believe it's six o'clock.
We did six o'clock, and, um, we'll be given some updates on that.
Great.
Okay. Anyone else for public participation? Anyone else for public participation? Hearing none, we'll move forward to our consent agenda.
The meeting's six on Wednesday.
Hmm? Six o'clock Wednesday, yep.
Is that the last meeting?
No. That's to be determined by the committee.
We're getting an update too tonight, right, Dave?
Hmm?
Is there an update on the agenda tonight?
Yes.
Yeah, a little bit, yeah.
Um, I don't wanna get too ahead of ourselves, but yes, that's okay. Um, any board members have any questions on the minutes that were sent out for consent agenda? How about the questions on the approval of wires and warrants? Anything on that?
Just one question.
Yep, Jeff.
Ron, on the, um, on the invoices for water, um, is Chalk Hill, it just seems high, the water bill there? I know it's the field irrigation, but, I mean, it's, the field irrigation itself is higher than Jockey Hollow's total consumption.
So it could be, um, are you, are you looking at the budget or are you looking at the actual work?
Uh, paid invoice report, yeah.
Paid invoice, okay.
I, I mean, it may not be a question that you can answer, and we have to have the facilities. It just seems high compared to the total budget. A bill from Jockey Hollow, it's higher than the total bill from Jockey Hollow.
Yeah, that doesn't, uh, let me take a look. I'll, uh, give me a, give me a couple.
When you get it, let us know, Ron, yeah, okay. Any other questions on that? No? Joe, we have a new hire?
Uh, we do. First, I wanna wish Laura Lagaman, the third-grade teacher, the best of luck. Laura is resigning to live closer to her family out of state in a few weeks. But we were really fortunate to have Matthew Jordan joining us to replace Laura. Matthew's a Monroe resident who comes to us with great references from Region 15 as a former, or as a, yeah, former elementary, uh, school teacher. Uh, he's certainly, you know, currently been serving as a math coach for the last few years at, uh, in Region 15. So we're excited to have him join us.
Okay, and you wanna tell us about some retirement?
Sure. I'm not sure why, but we often, um, we usually only notify the Board of Certified Retirements, and, you know, Sheila and I were talking. We thought it was only right that we recognize all of our employees who've made the decision to retire, especially after serving in the district for, you know, quite some time. So we, you know, recognize them now and then again in June. To that end, we wanna wish Linda Smeriglino, Guidance Secretary at MASC, the best of luck. Linda will be retiring actually in January of this year. Additionally, our STEM pair educator, Susan Daley, will be retiring at the end of the year. And some other person is also retiring at the end of this year as well. Congratulations to Diane Clary, who will be retiring at the end of this year. So a big thank you to Diane for everything she's done for us.
Absolutely, yes. Any questions on that for Joe? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Christine, seconded by Dennis. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much. Motion passes. We're gonna move to the reports of the committee, starting with our students. Somebody has some big news, right? Sports news?
Yeah.
All right.
Good evening. I hope you're all having a marvelous Monday. This past weekend, MASC's Investing Club held its first-ever Invest in Our Community food drive. Investing Club volunteers managed to collect 1,534 pounds of food and over $700 in cash donations for the Monroe Food Pantry this holiday season. We thank Investing Club for their efforts in bettering our community. Also, this week marks the achievements of seven MASC senior athletes as they sign to play their respective college sports. In no particular order, their commitments are as follows. Jackson Zylak, College of Holy Cross for baseball. Charlotte Pinto, Moravian College for lacrosse. Grace Ely, University of Delaware for softball. Bailey Bida, UC Berkeley for lacrosse. Elise Smith, University of Bridgeport for soccer. Amelia Stevens, College of William &amp; Mary for soccer. And Ella McGee for Northeastern University for soccer. Wish them luck in their future paths.
This Thursday will be the opening night of the fall play, Wacky, which will continue to play until Saturday night. Our students have been hard at work for the past few months to put together this murder mystery, so I highly recommend you come out and watch it this weekend. Also, this Thursday will be the annual DECA field trip to Jordan's ITs rope course. I, along with many other DECA members, am very excited for this chance to bond as a chapter at the zip line course. After a long day in the heights of Jordan's furniture store, we like to finish with pizza from Jenny's. This event is one of the highlights of our DECA chapter and is a great way for our members to connect before the start of our competition prep.
Good evening. Last Saturday, our MASC girls soccer team made history by winning the Class L state championship for the first time with a two-to-one win over North Haven. The first goal was scored by sophomore Natalia Fabrik, and the winning goal was made by senior Elise Smith. MASC captain Ella McGee was named MVP of the match. The football team had their last home game of the season on Friday and ended with a victory against Pomprog. Fall sports are ending, thus marking the beginning of the winter sports season. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, in other news, um, the Health and Safety Committee met on Thursday, the 13th. Joe summed that up in his weekly report, so I don't need to review that. Does any other board members have any other committee reports? No?
No, 'cause we have our.
Coming up.
Coming up.
Okay. Yeah? No, nothing? Okay, then we're gonna move on to the report of the superintendent. Joe?
I guess we'll, poor Ron, I think's still doing his homework from, uh, from Jeff's piece, but first his review of the fund activity statement. I don't know if anyone has any other questions for Ron.
No? He's still looking that up, or you found it?
Yeah, so I did find it. It is high. It's, um, like, $549 as opposed to $265. And it is just the irrigation for the back soccer field, so I'll, uh...
I don't know if there's a leak or something.
Yeah, well, that's completely possible.
That's why we have buttons over there.
Well, it's a catch-up. What's that? Well, it's a catch-up. No, it's not a catch-up. That's what I thought. It might've been like two months or, you know, but it doesn't, it doesn't appear to be, so.
If there was a leak on the field, we would know, because, um, MFC practices on that all, all fall, so I would think there was.
Is it, is it shut off already, or winterized?
I'm sure it's winterized right now, yeah.
Maybe we can ask Dan to take a look at it.
I know, Chrissy asked about the, the facility study, just to keep everybody abreast. So the, uh, the Ad-Hoc Facilities Committee is scheduled to meet again this Wednesday evening at six o'clock. You know, during the facility study, Silver Petricelli highlighted a number of deficiencies in our building, uh, buildings, many of which we were already aware of, obviously. You know, in addition to looking at bringing Chalk Hill back online, our goal is to create a longer-range capital plan to address the needs in our aging buildings. Some of the items that Silver Petricelli highlighted have already been addressed. Dan and his guys have addressed a number of items, but others are still in the pipeline to be done. Dan, Ron, Sheila, and I have met to prioritize many of these items and wanna present them to the Ad-Hoc Committee on Wednesday night for consideration and comment, figure out, you know, our next steps. Starting to put together, like I said, a longer-range, more along the lines of a 10-year capital plan. You know, with all that information that we got from them.
And the structural en, uh, a structural engineer has been hired and is looking at Chalk Hill.
Yes.
So we don't have a report on that yet, but that's, that's been done, or is being done.
It's being done.
The person was hired.
Email I got today was they're finalizing the report. They hope to have it to us by the end of the week. I asked if, you know, if we had a, you know, preliminary information that I can bring at least to the Ad-Hoc Committee Wednesday night.
So they have any information on moving this forward? I mean, is there support from the First Selectmen, the Board of Finance for this?
It's, it's gonna have to go through the, through the progression. Hold, hold on, hold on.
We haven't seen yet, how many support from anybody outside?
I'm talking about moving forward with Chalk Hill.
Until we give them a report saying yay, nay.
Because we've been hearing there's no support for this by the First Selectmen.
I think we have to wait until the data's been delivered and we've delivered it to them, right? So how can they react to something that's mythical right now? I mean, we know we have a need, we just don't know how big the need is.
Well, it's possible to take a position.
Well, yeah. Sorry, what did you say?
It's possible to take a position.
Well, I, it's my understanding a position must take.
Right, yeah.
I have not been told officially anything that he will or will not support it, or Town Council, I've been told nothing, nothing official. Just proceed with the process, so.
To that point, Dave, can you just kinda lay out the process as you see it going forward? From Wednesday, after Wednesday, or Wednesday moving forward?
Yeah, so at the meeting Wednesday, our goal is to give a, give the committee an update on, on just this, and then to move into, because that's going forward, right? Chalk Hill is addressing needs, so the structural engineer needs to look at that and then report back to the committee and to us of yay or nay on Chalk Hill. Then we go from there, right? Crawl, walk, run. The second half of the committee is condition. That's what Joe was talking about. So the, the committee will look at condition of the buildings. Are we putting it on capital? Do we need a major renovation? You know, can things just get picked away of in the normal, normal course of, course of business? That's what the committee is, will have to decide next. Or, I'm sorry, not deciding. They make, they're making a recommendation to the board.
To us, in which we'll have a meeting to discuss.
And then we, we will discuss and then put forward via capital requests to the town. And then that'll have to go through that process too, right?
Is that gonna be a separate committee, or the same committee's gonna be?
Same committee, same committee. The only separate committee would be if a major building committee need, was needed to be done, and that's spelled out in state law, believe it or not. There's actual language on who needs to be in that committee. So. That's really where we're at, yes, Chris?
I just have a couple things. One, um, that list that they gave us, right, was exhaustive and overwhelming, if I remember correctly, and it was, like, rated ones, twos, threes, and fours, is that right? Is there a way, and I know we've opened something, we sat here, and then there were some things that were done, for us to kinda get an update from that list to see if, look at you smiling.
That's exactly.
He's ahead of you.
That's what Dan's been, uh, yeah.
So we're gonna get a copy of that? Okay, great. And then the second thing was, you know, we've heard a lot from parents, right, and emails, and just being out in the community around the state of the schools, right? Like, I remember getting an email from my mom that Stephanie about sitting in open house and how appalling, right, the ceiling looked. So I, it's just frustrating, you know, because I, I don't wanna get to June 30th again, and we're missing another deadline on state funding and getting, you know, getting our application in on time. So it's, it is almost Christmas, and, you know, it's gonna be June before we know it, so I just wanted to make a comment.
So my goal on Wednesday was to push the committee to not let another June 30th go by the wayside. I mean, that is my individual goal. We approved it, us, we're moving on, so let's get the app going. If we've approved, the town approves it or not, if the Selectmen, if Town Council, we approved it.
Right, we already approved it.
So let's start filling out the application, guys. And if it gets held up in a process, we went through our steps.
I think, you know, in my perspective, we approved the concept.
Yes, we did.
I think we need to know what Chalk Hill.
I think the honing down of what we're already doing, or what we can do to narrow that down, is what Wednesday's meeting said. Now, is that an open meeting to the board, or is that just the committee?
Committee meeting. It's open to the public, but it's a committee meeting.
Open to the public.
So that, that's what I'm hearing, is that's what's gonna be explained there. This is what we think we can do. This is what the engineers have said, hopefully that reports in, and then we have a progression from there, right?
So my understanding is we have to know if we're gonna move forward with the design of Chalk Hill, like, three floors or not, before we can present anything, right, to Town Council and First. I know we sent something to First Selectmen, but he, they can't do anything with it until we have our actual plans of what we.
We need to know how viable the building is or not.
Like, we need to know, does Chalk Hill, can it have three floors, can it not have three floors? Like, if not, then what's the change of plans to what the school will look like? 'Cause that will change a lot, right? We were moving Board of Ed offices to Chalk Hill. So if that can't happen, it's gonna be a lot of moving parts.
We have to have that, because part of that application is your spec ed.
Before it can move forward, right. There is a lot with that third floor. And without knowing if we can put a third floor on, we cannot move forward with any plan until we know what.
Well, I beg to differ. I filled out a lot of grants.
I didn't take it that way.
We can sit down and start filling out the grant no matter what. Special Ed does, what do you mean? There are parts of any grant, and I've done so many of them, that we could start filling out already, guys. It was like the AC. If we had shovel in the ground, Oxford didn't have a shovel in the ground, but they got the AC grant through the state because they had plans to do the HVAC. They never had parts up on the roof to do it. They had plans, the Board of Ed had talked about putting HVAC in the school. State said, "Wow, there you go, fill it out." All I'm saying is, let's start filling it out. It doesn't matter if we do three floors or two. There's gotta be preliminary stuff on that form we can start filling out. That's all I'm saying.
Me, I don't know. Kenneth?
Well, I think we need to go back to the plan that Michelle presented us, that this was all the pre-work that we're gonna do to make, to make June, because we couldn't make last June.
Correct.
And part of that was, don't forget, part of that was the viability of Chalk Hill. And the other part of that was actually hiring a firm to do those, those plans and to get all that done. So that needs to get done.
Because if they came back and said Chalk Hill's not viable at all, and it's a complete rebuild, that's.
We're starting from scratch.
You're starting from scratch. That's what I'm saying. I don't know how much you can actually fill out without really knowing what Chalk Hill is capable of handling.
Don't wanna miss the June cutoff, that's all I'm saying.
No, I know, I don't think any of us do.
Any excuse, I don't wanna miss that June cutoff.
I think we all agree.
With that thought process in place, right? We have a shared grant writer. When can we invite that person, I forget her name, excuse me, to a meeting after your Wednesday meeting, to see what she can start applying grants to?
Whenever.
Is that too early? I mean, that, that should be part of the invite, in my mind. Invite her there, so she understands where we, what we're faced with. Think it's like getting a handle, to Jerry's point, maybe there are things that can be filled out now.
And it's research into the grants first, then.
Right, right.
That's what I was just gonna say. Like, I don't know this person at all, but, like, state grants and education grants are very different and difficult and involved, and if she's never done them before.
Michelle, who we hired, she does these grants for a living, guys. I mean, that's what Michelle from Petricelli does. She sits with schools and helps with these grants.
Right, but I meant our grants.
Yeah, no, I agree.
And if we hired them again to do the architectural planning, they would do all of that.
Right, that was, yes.
Right. Jeff, did you have something?
I was just gonna ask if we, if we, this board, or Joe, you have access to the grant writer, you know, as it stands?
I do, yeah, yeah.
The town grant writer, or?
Well, it's supposed to be a shared position.
Yeah.
It's a shared position.
Yeah, but back to Chrissy's point, is education grants.
This person's, well, I can't speak for her. We could have, come here and present what kind of grant experience she has. I mean, that's the purview of the board, to ask for that. But, you know, if we think, and, you know, we went in with the hopes of getting grants written two years ago, and we have the shared position, right? We have received some grants, and the town has. I don't know what the schools, I, I think there was a couple for the school, but I think we need to have that knowledge and figure out whether she's capable of doing what we're asking her to do.
Are we, Joe, are we communicating with her, or, as to what, you know, potential needs we have, or?
I mean, we've talked to her about a lot of other grants, not necessarily to this, yeah.
Obviously, the more grants we can get, bringing in this being.
Yeah, I think it's her. A way to communicate this to the public so that parents actually know what's going on?
Communicate.
Like, after Wednesday's meeting, whatever society, people, there's.
I know, you've talked about this.
Huge, um, people just don't know what's going on, and I hear that frequently. They have no idea.
The other side of that is you can lead a horse to water, because we've communicated immensely, and I've had people tell me.
But no one's gonna read the Board of Ed medics.
You know, I, I don't know. I've had people tell me they didn't know about a referendum, so, you know.
And the signs are on the green, and they still didn't know about a referendum.
But I think to Alan's point, right, we're inundated with information. I, I'm gonna speak as a parent who gets a gazillion emails, and I read maybe 25% of them and pray that I'm not missing something important. But, you know, having to go to the website, having to find the information on my own, I'm not gonna do that. I'm speaking for myself. I think what went a lo, and I know you put everything on the website, and that was amazing, but I think what went a long way was then sending out those automated emails to everybody with, like, this is the update.
Updates, yeah.
So I, to Alan's point, I think getting something out after that Wednesday meeting, 'cause it's been kind of dormant for a while, right? Nobody's probably thinking about it right now.
Or even a quick video.
You don't do the Facebook page anymore, do you?
I really don't.
No. That was good when we had it.
I met a lot of parents, I met a lot of parents, um, like, over the summer, say, "Oh, yeah, what do you mean? Chalk Hill's being built right now. It was approved by the Board of Ed, it's gonna happen."
There is no perfect communication mechanism in this town. You know, we have one paper, right? This communication to the parents, to these newsletters, the best communication there is, right? So if we use the tools that we have, some will read the web, some, some will, I mean, you just gotta, it's gotta be a blitz. We have to have real data to be a blitz, so we stop the rumor nonsense, which is pervasive. I'll tell you that. You know, people have all sorts of things of what's going on. Until we state unequivocally as a Board of Ed, this is what's going on, and can go down in writing, this is what's happening today, it's all noise, right? So, you know, it's a text, like, people refuse it.
I think after Wednesday, getting an update out would be great.
I mean, maybe the Facebook page might be bringing it back.
Media's a blitz, you gotta, you gotta.
It was a good page. It was like, you couldn't comment on it or anything like that, it was just.
That's a good one.
Huh?
That's a good.
Yeah, but it was just information, basic stuff. Like, even if, I think it was even like days off and half-days. You see the same comments on the Monroe L page or the Monroe Middle School page. Like, is there a day off this week? Is there this, is there that? Like, we put, we used to put, like, the holidays on, they're days off, half-days. It might be worth revisiting, you know?
Joe, you can do that on your free time.
I don't even know who did it.
I don't either.
That's, that's how long ago it was.
The Board a while ago used to have a communications committee.
Well, I was gonna say, Alan and I were on it.
So you can always restart that again.
We're going way back.
All right, any, any other major issues about the facilities update? We'll get you all updated after Wednesday.
So Wednesday's the meeting. Could be some decision that, there won't be, because the, the facility, that, that is structural. Okay, that one's ready, so we'll hear about it.
Well, there will be decisions about other buildings, though. We will be talking about.
Potentially, there could be, yes.
And, and that Ad-Hoc group has already made a recommendation about Chalk Hill.
Yes.
Right.
To this, to this.
Right, right.
So once the engineer comes back and says yes, no, whatever, then does it come to the Board of Ed? Or does it have to go back, does anything have to go back to the Ad-Hoc Committee again? No.
No.
Once they make the recommendation of yes, it can.
Chalk Hill can come right to us now.
It can come right to us from that, okay.
And we have to prove it again, a second time?
No.
But we're like, what we're doing.
No, we have to see what we're doing, have a plan, and then put the process in place with the town, right?
What about portable classrooms?
In terms of?
The portable classrooms?
Well, I mean, in an ideal situation, Chalk Hill gets approved.
Still gonna take a couple years.
It's, when are we gonna start building it? 2029, right?
We're, we're, well.
That's when it would be done.
Potentially, right.
So what are we gonna do in the meantime?
If we need, if we need portable classrooms, then we'll have to cross that bridge.
That's exactly the point.
Yep.
We did get a little bit of a respite this year with kindergarten. Again, I, I've said it before, I don't, I'll see if that's an anomaly. Like I said, this was the first year that parents had a chance to be prepared for the new legislation, kindergarten starting time.
Is there still a waiver for next year, or is that done?
Yeah, still a waiver.
How long will that be in place? Forever?
For now?
Forever.
Yeah, for now, I don't see them, they stay changing.
They're not capable.
There's been some conversation of them changing.
They're not capable of making a decision.
All right.
That, those numbers, though, did have, you know, the first year, we got a lot more than we did last year.
It's coming down.
Because the first year, people didn't have, they didn't have daycare plans, they didn't, you know.
So you feel like the numbers are coming down as, you have more parents following the September deadline? Okay.
And then even some parents whose kids are now July and August, saying, I want them to be the youngest.
Youngest.
Like they used to be in November and December.
Correct. Okay.
Well, there's at least one for next year coming up.
When's your birthday?
Look out.
August 24th. So you got one.
You don't even wanna think about it.
I mean, he won't need a portable classroom.
You don't need a waiver either.
All right, we are moving to unfinished business. Curriculum second review with a vote anticipated. We had a presentation last meeting on AP Spanish, new course, Advanced Placement Environmental Science, and the materials for that. Any, any discussion before we get to a motion? Any, any discussion before we get to a motion? We have to have a discussion afterwards anyway, but any questions?
Well, I, I think it's, the more we can do, the better. I mean, it's all about students and progression, right? But I think to Roy's point, right? Every addition comes with a subtraction, is the way it looks right now. So we got to look, even though it's like $10,000, stuff like that, right? It's not much, but if things that we predict to go, project are going to happen, we got to figure out how we're going to pay for this. The more, the troubling part of that one or the other one was the progression of how many more teachers we'll need if it really takes off, right? Which was not known, because it's not known. But it's something we have to keep in mind while we're approving these things, is what I'm saying.
So we won't put in a class because it's popular?
No, no. I think, I think with all these things, if you want to digress, I think with all our AP things, we need to know how successful we are. How many kids are taking them? How many are getting the three? How, how, what are our investments yielding, right? We have a good feel that we've got a lot of kids getting the AP breads, the parents aren't paying for the other. But we really don't have hard statistics.
Yeah, we do.
It's a changing profile. It's a changing profile.
It's in the book that we got.
For this one, for this class. We don't know, because it hasn't started, right? But, you know, we need to do the same kind of due diligence we do with all of those AP programs. This is how many kids are taking it. This is how many kids are at the three. So we make sure that our investments, as in this one, are the lower one.
We do that with every AP class.
Right, but...
Do you have any AP classes that have lower enrollment that you don't offer a following year, or no? Or are they all pretty heavily...
Probably the lowest enrollment, just because of the, of course, probably AP Chem.
AP Chem tends to be low, yeah. Some of the specialty AP Computer Science are a little lower.
Low, like 10, 5, 12, 20?
Well...
What's the range?
AP Chem could be probably low teens. The Computer Science, quite frankly, unless things have changed, there's a lot of, like, one students in it, but Bill McDonough does them as a, as an independent study.
Like a study, yeah.
So he...
So those don't really... Yeah, that doesn't really count. So your chem is your lowest, most...
In terms of a, of one class.
In terms of an actual class with the teacher in the classroom?
So Dennis, what you're saying is maybe a follow-up? After we start a new course, six months or a year later, a little follow-up to say enrollment, how did it go?
Yeah. And then to anticipate, is this going to need more sessions, more teachers? How to, you know, funding-wise, things like that?
And my thought too is, you know, kids can't take two classes, so it may, you know, it may cannibalize from other science classes. So kids that might take anatomy and physiology might now take environmental science. So there might be, you know, one or two sections of that, of this.
So after a new class gets approved and gets going, I guess what I'm hearing from the board is we'd like a little update six months in or a year later, to just get what the numbers are and go from there.
This way, and we, we hate surprises, right? We've got 65-year-old buildings and 90-year-old buildings that we have surprises with. With this, we can quantify it, we can see if it's growing, and we can anticipate maybe more staffing needs coming up versus being surprised by them. That's the only reason I'm bringing it up.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the new materials for AP Spanish Language Culture, the new course of AP Environmental Science and materials for AP Environmental Science as presented? Jerry, seconded by Christine. Any further discussion? Other than we'd want a follow-up?
Yeah, I would just ask, what is the threshold for running, whether a class will run?
It's size. It really depends on the, on the content. Sometimes we'll, we'll merge two classes together. For years, I know, like, French III and IV had low numbers, and they would, they would be, they would be a combined class. If there's teacher availability, things of that nature. I mean, that's the other thing. I mean, we, this class could be immensely popular, but we might have to limit it to X amount of kids, because we can only run so many sections.
Anything further? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion passes unanimous, thank you very much. Moving on to our next item is an executive discussion, executive session, discussion of bargaining matters and document review for the teacher's contract. Can I have a motion enter into executive session for the discussion of the bargaining matters and document review of potential settlement of the teacher's successor collective bargaining agreement, inviting Superintendent Cobbza, Assistant Superintendent Cassinelli, and Finance Director Bonofsky to attend? Christine, seconded by Dennis. Further discussion? Yes, Alan?
We're going to vote on it tonight?
Potentially, yes. So we're going to come out and vote on it? We also have our new business, and we also have policies first review after this.
Okay.
You want to switch that up? You want to do policies first?
We would need to change the agenda.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, which we could do, but...
Well, everybody has to vote.
It's all right.
I think if we get into a lengthy discussion, we'll have to talk about, about that. But if everybody wants to hang tight. So all in favor? Unanimous. We are in executive session at 7:33.
We're coming back out.
Back room?
Here.
Back room, we're going to have to actually go across the hall.
And we're coming back here, right? So...